Yeah, Matt will send them up periodically, but still should let you in on the.
Good.
I don't know if you're going to have to do something like that.
Matt's not here.
You know, Jeannie's, I can be able to use her computer because she got the alert to change her password.
Okay.
That's Matt here.
Jeannie's computer is dead, so she'll be terrible.
We got you.
Just give the old thumbs up, thumbs down.
What else could there be?
Just give her the thumbs up or thumbs down.
Sound off at every time.
The microphones are on and they are hot.
Poison any?
Your answer's something, we have cherry. No, EBSD, not.
Five, one, two, three. Yeah?
I could screw it up until next week, but I couldn't get in Friday at three.
Yeah.
So anybody since, I'm not getting in.
Okay.
Get started and you can jump back on that. Please rise and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to thank everybody for attending today. If you would please silence any electronic or mute any electronic devices you have. We'll try to do the same. All right, prior to this meeting, we have a short executive session to discuss personnel and contractual items. If we can move to roll call.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mrs. Ecker.
Here.
Ms. Hawes.
Here.
Mrs. Moretti.
Here.
Mrs. Polovich.
Here.
Mr. Pollak.
Here.
Mrs. Rinaldi.
Here.
Ms. Sarno.
Here.
Mr. Polino.
Here.
Everyone's on the tablets.
All right, at this point, we'll open the floor to any community members that would like to speak on agenda items at this point. Please come down, state your name and where you're from.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Vickney. I'm the band director at Springdale. I just wanted to speak on the importance of an item I know is up for approval as far as next year's budget goes regarding a trailer for the marching band. If I could give you. Please be very kind, I apologize, I printed 10, I was just telling board members, if some of you wouldn't mind sharing those, I'd appreciate it.
Just pass those up for you.
I apologize, I would have been here last week, but I wasn't aware that it was successful. I've been talking to Jay about this and since about November when we turned in our budgets, and it's something that I feel very strongly about. And I just wanted to explain to you a little bit why this is worth being in the budget if you should have any questions. The paper I gave you is a visualization of the data regarding the marching band. My first year as assistant director, there were 17 students. And now our next season starts next week, and we have a tentative 55 students signed up, which I, if we can even hit 50, I will be over the moon. It's like everything I could want right there. The pie charts you see are outlining how half the program uses a lot of equipment. The drum line is very large, the guard is very large. We have our podium and larger instruments like our sousaphone, which the boosters actually just paid to be refurbished. It looks phenomenal, there are no dents in it, it's beautiful. And so it's really important to me that the students have this trailer not only to keep the equipment safe. This is stuff that the boosters and the district have invested a lot of money in, and it's important that it's stored and transported properly. Joel at the high school has been amazing letting us borrow his van for the past two years, but it is just simply not going to be big enough anymore for this size program. It worked fine before, but moving forward, it's not safe for the equipment to be transported that way, and kids just kind of taking it in and out of the van, it's just not efficient overall. Organization and performance readiness when we get to a location, having the students have a routine to get in and out of the trailer, know where their things are. Brad up at the high school agreed to help me install shelving in it. That's going to be huge for us. It will also support further band growth and boost morale and pride, and just the students, you know, knowing that they, their program is worth having this investment. And lastly, it's really going to help with storage on and off season. I currently have the cart of uniforms in the corner of my classroom because there's nowhere to keep them, and we used to store them on the trailer during the off season after they had been dry cleaned. Some concerns that I outlined at the bottom, my assistant director would be more than happy to drive it. This will not involve paying any overtime. It's the same as driving the van, it still has to happen. The band is doing two parades, two festivals, and three competitions this year. So we are more than the football games at this point. I just signed us up for the Pimba competitions today, and I'm so excited. I know, Mr. Conti, remember whenever going, they're the best, I'm so excited. So we are transporting this equipment more than those eight Friday night football games, and I want to continue growing and doing more. I signed us up for three competitions to start slowly. We haven't competed in many years, but of course, when you have 17 kids and half of them are involved in a lot of sports and attendance was rough, but that's not the case anymore. So I just wanted to come speak to you about it so that you know how seriously I take it and how strongly I feel about it, and it is worth the taxpayers' dollars to make this purchase. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but.
Do we have it, we have it in the budget now? We do. So I'm just curious, so they used to always park it in the parking lot. Would they plan on doing it the same way or can we park that somewhere else? Because if we go to football games and stuff up there, we may need that space.
I feel like there should be room to the side where the van. If you're going in the D wing parking lot down in the right, I feel like there would be room there.
Yeah, that's what we used to park it down there, but we had the football games down Springdale, so.
I'd be happy to store it somewhere else whenever we have home games and things like that.
That's good to go back to Pimba, that was always great.
Oh, I'm, I'm so excited.
That van has to be over 20 years old.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And it's very big, but it's big vertically, and this stuff cannot be stored vertically.
Is this a pull-along trailer or is this a drive and dance?
No, it would be a pull-along trailer. And the red pickup truck that the maintenance crew has is in rough condition. I know that's on the, Jay was talking about it needing to be done. The boosters are willing to pay to rent like a little truck, not like a moving truck, but the little pickup trucks they have to tow it. I thought about asking parent volunteers who have trucks. I was, you know, we've kind of, we've talked through it at many a booster meeting over the past year. So we have Plan B, C, and D ready to go, so.
I would say pulling a trailer is very different.
Yes, and this one, I plan on getting a smaller one than what we had. There's no need for a 24-foot trailer. I think 15, 16.
I'd like to congratulate you on that growth of the, that is awesome.
I'm very excited, and you see the one pie chart, like half of them are seventh through ninth grade, so this is not about to disappear in a year. They're very committed, and they have been asking me for, like for the new show for the past month. And I was like, do you think that it just like, in my dreams, I write it, it gives me a week or two to finish? And so, but I'm excited that they're excited. I think that the dip was COVID, and this is returning. Maybe we just got lucky with a lot of years of very involved students. I like to think that me being at the elementary school and now that I'm up here and they know.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know, you know, not to like, you know, me, no.
I was going to say, I think a lot of it is Mrs. Vickney. I think the children developing that relationship with her, and also kudos to Mr. Skarets, I think, for building it up so much in the elementary school. And so when you talk to fifth and sixth graders, like they can't wait to get to band because of that move that we've made. And I, I think it was already that way anyway because of the enthusiasm built when you guys were at the elementary, but now knowing we're going to have Mrs. Vickney again, I, I, I think you should give yourself a little more credit for that. It's very visible, yeah.
Yes, I just, I really think that this trailer is going to peak the growth. Our mark on the map, if you would, and yeah.
Now, again, how big is this trailer going to be that you need to satisfy the need?
I think 15, 16. I don't know what measurements they're sold in, but it, I don't think it needs to be over 20. I think it can be a little smaller.
Well, we had, didn't we have a, we had a 20 or 24 foot back then. That was a little tight then, I think. Do you think this 16 will work?
I think it will if we are strategic with the, I mean, I'll get whatever the money will get me without being crazy, you know? I'm not going to say no, but.
We use, I'll tell you, we use every part of that trailer.
Well, Mr. S, when it first came, he built the shelves and all that stuff inside them.
Well, you remember that, we used everything inside there, and I just don't remember how many kids we had at that time.
We also stored. I remember they stored the rain jackets on there, that took up a big part of it. So we've been having the students keep their own, and like the helmets and things like that. But I think if we're strategic with. Building those shelves again, and I already talked to Brad. He said yes, so.
I'm just, if we, if we're spending the money on it, we probably want to get the right sizes, it's going to be.
And I, and I'm more than happy to let Jay or somebody more qualified make that decision. To get the trailer, so, because Joel has been amazing over the past two years. But I know every time I walked up to him, he was like, oh, I do want now. And I was like, I need your van, can I have the key? Difficult loading it and unloading it twice a week for the whole season. It was not efficient and will not work long term, simply put, so.
That's good, thank you very much.
Thank you. I apologize that I have to sneak out early, I have a one and two-year-old waiting for me to go put them to that attitude. I appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments about the agenda items on the audience? Saying that, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Polino. We have Mr. Thompson here today from the Foreman Group. He's going to provide an update, a update on Marshall Auditorium and the Masonry.
Well, I'm pleased to be here for about the 30th time. I always enjoy coming and talking to you and letting you know what's happening. We are putting out a project already for bid. It was available a couple of days ago, and contractors are picking it up, we know that. So that is the masonry project. Let's see, right now, we have a pre-bid scheduled for the 22nd of May. And what that means is that the contractors will come onto the site. They'll be able to take a look at the building, we'll walk them around, we'll talk to them a little bit about what they have to do to bid the project, what their requirements are. Bid date is set for the 5th of June. And that's a 130 bid date. We'll presumably have it here in this building. And the contractors will have to drop their bids off before that, and then we will read them all aloud publicly so that you will know what the bids are. The contractors have two days to withdraw. So if they feel like they've made a mistake, they can withdraw within a two-day business period of time, and then you would look at the next lowest bidder. Doesn't happen very often, but occasionally that does happen. So after that, we can do some research on who is giving you the bids because we do have some qualification requirements. This is a very specific type of project. We're looking for specific contractors who have done a good bit of restoration work for masonry as part of their requirements. So we'll be looking at that. And so then, if everything works out, award could occur on your agenda setting meeting, if you would like to do it that date, which would be the 10th of June. Or if you prefer to hold it off until the 17th, which is your voting meeting, you could do that too. So that's where we are on that project. The other project is the Auditorium Lobby Project. That is still under code review. We still have not received code approval for that. I anticipate it any day. They did call us with a question a week ago today, which we answered. They felt that it was getting pretty close for them to be done. I again spoke with the borough this morning and asked them what the status of it was. They use what's called a third-party reviewer. They didn't know what the status was with their third party, so they were contacting them and are going to get back to me with what they believe the date of that approval will be. So once we receive that, then we will coordinate dates with the administration here of placing it out to bid, pre-bid date, bid date, those sort of things. So that's where we are in the two projects. Any questions?
Those are the local codes that we're trying to resolve, no other?
No, we're in good shape. I did speak with the third-party reviewer last week. They felt it was in really good condition. At that time, they had no comments. So I believe we're going to be okay. It's just, I guess, taking them a little longer than they thought it would. And so we kind of have our own policy. We don't go out to bid before we have those because it can get really complicated if, if something comes up. So we're going to wait for that. We're still tying up some loose ends. I'm going to have a couple of questions for you, just minor things here that we're just, we're even looking at maybe changing some things to reduce costs, stuff like that as we're waiting. So we're looking at it. And, but hopefully, we're getting it out to bid next week if we get approval here fairly soon. Okay, and then we'll give you all the dates.
During the time you receive official notification for the code.
Few days.
Couple of days.
Yeah, maybe three days, something like that.
Time to advertise.
Yeah, just to get it together, to get your advertisement, your invitation to bid together, to coordinate, sending it to the print house, to get them to be able to make it available to the contractors, and just tying up loose ends, dating all the drawings and specs, which we always do, things like that. Few days.
Will we have a public meeting that wants to go over those cost savings?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I'm sure you will, yes. Okay.
Thank you for coming.
No, absolutely.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Very much.
Have a good night. Okay, I have one other item here with the multipurpose field. I don't recall if I mentioned this last week or not. We were fielding some questions about parking, and we want to make, we want, I want to stress, we are making all efforts to take care of our Dynamo fans, our Dinamos, and any spectators that may come to our multipurpose field. We have, the board has already elected to repave the student parking lot. We also have district facilities that we can use for parking to make things more convenient for our residents, our community to come and enjoy either the marching band play, the color guard, football, soccer, whatever it might be. We're doing everything in our effort to make sure that they can do that without having any additional worries. At this time, we're going to move on to bills and payments, so I'll turn it back over to Mr. Polino.
All right. Mr. Moretti, bills and payments.
Thank you, Mr. Polino. Item 5.1, recommend the board approve the April 2025 Treasurer's Report, the Payment of Deals, the Disbursement Letter, excuse me, and the Accounts Payable List. And they were all attached for public and board review.
You have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Hawes. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, please enter your vote selection.
That concludes bills and payments, thank you, Mr. Polino.
Thank you. We'll move on to consent, agenda items, and operation and finance, Mr. Pollak.
At this time, I'd like the, well. I'd like to recommend the board approve the sent agenda items 6.2 to 6.10.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ecker. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's happened, motion passed. Enter your vote selection. Thank you, continuing on, Mr. Pollak, Operation and Finance.
Under Operations and Finance, recommend the board approve the 2025-26 General Fund Budget in the amount of $28,519,542. The budget represents an increase of $646,818 in operational costs and $2 million transfer to capital reserve. That is $2,646,818 more than 24 and 25. Budget of $25,872,724. Local revenue for this proposed final budget will be provided by a real estate tax of one-half of 1% earned income tax, one-half of 1% real estate transfer tax, and one-half of $10 occupational privilege tax.
All right, including that is the real estate tax of 21.7109 mils. So we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rinaldi. Questions on the motion?
Before we do motions, Dr. Raj Kapal has some information.
Okay, I was going to say. Since last week, it will be believed.
Take off mine and then?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. I want to kick things off here by, one, expressing my appreciation to the Board of Directors for a few things. First off, this time last year, you were talking about the potential of having to raise taxes slightly without knowing how finances would be in the future. Secondly, you've made sound decisions to allow us to build up our fund balance, which is healthy. This gives a school district a lot of flexibility in the decisions that they choose. So I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank Dr. Raj Kapal for her diligence in crunching numbers, going through multiple iterations of her budget of this presentation, and it's with gratitude that I'm here this evening. Two other items that I want to add, just to paint a clearer picture of what schools have to face. Just this week, I learned from PD that community schools east and west, which are alternative schools, are no longer going to be funded by the Department of Education. This leaves many school districts out in the cold because they have students that are going there right now, and they have to figure out, A, where they're going to send these students, and B, how they're going to find the money to provide education for students in these schools. Currently, we don't have any students enrolled there. These are state-approved schools though, so you only have a very small selection. And because the state at one point subsidized the cost, it was a very minimal expense for school districts for kids who needed this very structured type of environment. The other part that I want to add, and I know last week we talked about unfunded mandates, there's another one that's coming out for the, with the Americans with Disabilities Act, which is a good thing to put in place. No money provided or assistance to take care of this. And what it is, is compliance for online accessibility standards. And school districts have by 2027 to make these changes. And it's not just about compliance, it's about meeting the needs of all of our community members. This extends well beyond our school walls into the borough, into the township, into Harmer, into Cheswick, into Springdale, it permeates everywhere. If you're on our website, it has to be compliant so that there are captions. So for example, our websites, course content, our learning management systems, board docs, they all need to be ADA compliant, even our athletic communications and videos. The way it was described today at our superintendent's meeting is, this is a bear. This is a gigantic thing that schools are going to have to undertake. And that's, I even mentioned the cost, the dollars and cents. So there will be a work cost, people having to do this, and there's also going to be a cost to make sure that these programs are audited, to make sure the contracts are changed, to make sure that our service providers are in compliance. So in closing, I want to say the work ahead is complex, the pressure is real. As my, as my daughter used to say, the pain is real, whenever she would get in trouble. But we're district to problem solvers, and we're visionary, and we're open about what we do. We don't always agree, we always land on a solution and a way to move ahead for the best of our students. I thank you for your trust, I thank you for your leadership, and I thank you for your unwavering support for all of our Dinamos. I'll turn things over to Dr. Raj Kapal.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Bricek. As shared last week, this is just an update of information. The budget is built to help our students achieve their maximum potential. And this is a shout-out to one of our students for her artwork. I think it's the clips of the work, but I could be mistaken. But needless to say, we've got a great art department. So saluting the students and the teachers who bring out the best in our students. So here's unfunded mandate, school districts, this is prescriptive. We've got to adopt the proposed final budget today. Whether, you know, we like it or not, whether we've got all the information we need to pass this. But tonight, the school boards got to adopt the 25-26 proposed final budget. The state does not adopt their budget till June. So, you know, this is a mandate for Act One of 2006. Okay, so last week, there were suggestions asked of administration. One was to work the mileage rate so that half the taxpayers, half the community does not see much or maybe a credit with the taxes. And that's what I worked on. And so we are now looking at revenues of $25,340,942. So that's just, you know, a snapshot. So the bulk of the revenues comes from local sources. State is, you know, a little less than a third of the pie. Sorry.
I didn't want to interrupt you, it's this page here.
That's Act One. This is local revenues. And you see the pie chart, the bulk of this is local. This is state, 27%, 1% dismal, that's the federal revenues. And for this budget, we are dipping 5% into. And for this budget, we are dipping 5% into the fund balance. And you will get clearer numbers as we go through. Expenditures, the bulk of it, it has to be with instruction. You'll see that support services is the nurses, guidance, not directly in the classrooms, but still an integral part of education of our students. The non-operational services, that's 3%. That's the athletics and student activities. And last but not least, the 10% is debt service. That's a healthy number to keep it at. You don't want to depend too much, or if not, you'll be paying principal and interest. And it's 10% is a good, healthy measure of debt. Okay, so we did see this last week. The governor proposed an increase in homestead exclusion, so that's a tax credit. And for our school district, the relief is $31,54. So that was my ballpark to work around with the mileage increase. So just to recap, expenditures with this budget, operating expenditures are $26,519,542. That's about a 2.5% change from this year's budget. It's extremely modest. It's basically bare bones. It's bad to the bone. But but that's where we are because, you know, a budget is an estimate. It's what you can project at this point in time. We did see yesterday, there is a freeze in tariffs. That's always on our minds. There is order for drug companies to hold costs. So obviously, costs and inflation is in focus right now to control it. So the 2.5% seems reasonable. But if anything changes, that would impact this number. So this is the most conservative, modest estimate that we've got. Revenue, same thing, there is a lot of uncertainty. So the slight mileage increase helps narrow the gap with using the fund balance. Also, in this budget, there'll be a $2 million transfer to capital reserve for projects. So that's to recap the budget. And also, the revenue reduction was able to be pulled down to 2.09%. Again, very, very conservative numbers here. So just to recap mileage, our district compared to other districts, we are still very low for the current school year. There are two school districts, Fox Chapel and Riverview. I did hear back from them in a survey. They plan to raise taxes for the upcoming budget. The rest of the school districts, I'm not sure. But we did see in a survey last week that there are 23 districts out of 44 who plan to raise mileage. There is about 10 who plan to dip into fund balance, and then a healthy number who plan to do both. And about three districts who've got other plans. So we are not alone with this. And so the mileage proposal is to increase mileage by 1.47%. The Act One full index allows our district to raise taxes by 4%. So in terms of mileage, that translates to less than a third of a mil. And you can see these are the median home values. And if you remember the tax credit, it's 31.54. And none of these numbers on the right-hand side exceed that. So that means households are getting a credit back. The median, as explained last week, is a good number because 50% of households fall under this number and 50% over that. So that's the traction made. So what does this mean to the homeowners? So if your assessment value is $50,000, you get a credit back of almost $16. So it's not an increase. It will be offset by $16 compared to the current year's school taxes. And you see that with subsequent assessment values. So if it's $75,000, that your home's assessed at, the credit is $7.92, almost $8. If the home's assessed at $100,000, that's the average median value for the school district, it's still a credit of 1 cent. So the way the mileage works, the impact of 0.315 mils increase is a credit for home assessed $100,000 and less. And you see the incremental homestead increases. If your home's assessed at $125,000, the annual impact is about $7.84. If your home's assessed at $150,000, the annual impact is $15.71. Very modest increases. And I'd like to thank the board for suggesting this and being very supportive of ensuring that the median value, anything below the median assessed value, that homeowner see a credit. So I'd just like to acknowledge and thank the school board for that. So let's move to capital projects. This is important. Capital projects, capital reserve, capital projects. We don't have revenue streams that build these particular funds. It comes from the general fund. So that's why the budget process is so important because the savings that ensue from the general fund flow to fund capital projects and capital reserve improvements. So for the upcoming school year, we've got technology. We've got the band trailer that Mrs. Bicking spoke so earnestly in support of. We've got some task collector software that we are looking at. Also, please note, year-to-date, this year alone, we've spent about $2.7 million of the capital reserve. So numbers that you've got are from June 30th. So since then, we've spent this much of money. And so always keep that at the back of your mind. The audits are ending June 30th of the previous school year. So after that, there's going to be inflows and outflows. And in terms of expenditures, that's a pretty, you know, huge amount. So for the upcoming year, the improvements that we make at the high school, its carpet replacement, we've got equipment breakdowns with facilities. So we always allocate that number. And also, anything with emergency management, that's a big priority. Safety is the cornerstone, one of the cornerstones of our school district. And facilities projects, you heard the presentation earlier tonight. We go out for bids with both the auditorium project and the masonry project. And between those two, it's about a little over $3 million. Of course, the bids have to come in. It could be higher. But that's the estimate right now. Multi-purpose field, we did approve this. That's about $2.295 million. Student parking lot, the board did a lot of hits. That's a little less than $80,000, but that's just, you know, a cushion there in case something unexpected comes up. Also, we got direction to have gravel parking. We've got a project on trying to find grant funding. Mrs. Sterny is trying to do that with a district-wide door project. We did have vendors visit our schools. So we anticipate proposals before the board shortly, next month, hopefully. And then upcoming long-term projects. So that's why I say, let's take our time. Let's get these done before we move to the next projects because it's important. So we've got the boiler at the high school. It's on, it's old. It's 40-plus years. We've got the chitter at ACME that needs to be replaced. That's on its last legs, too. Also, we've got additional areas with our HVAC. As you can see, that's another $1.475 million project. We started it this year, and it continues through next year. But that's part of capital reserve, capital projects, too. So all of this adds up. It's good to have savings, our reserves, to fund these various projects. And also, unexpected expenditures like masonry or the ACME roof project. That's where we dip into capital reserve. So we've also, I just want to remind the board, one of the other projects, which is long, long-term, is the fieldhouse renovation. And that's where we decided that we'll go for a bond issue at that time. And that's where we are with our capital projects. So usually, we do five-year projections. And so with salaries, you know, there's a 2% assumption because we could have retirements. And there should be some amount of attrition savings that'll offset any contractual increases. Our student enrollment is flat or declining. So this is very natural progression with staffing. With benefits, PISA's retirement system continues to stay at 30%. So that means every dollar, 30 cents goes towards PISA's. Healthcare, it just keeps compounding. This year was 5.7. Last year was close to double digits, so it doesn't come down. It's not like every year you go with a base number. It's an increase on top of that. So that's always a challenge. Professional services, there's students in outside placements. That depends on the students coming in and the services we place them with. But again, modest increases there. New equipment, the repairs, also a modest projection because we've been replacing a lot of equipment that's old and outdated. So hopefully, with preventive maintenance, the repairs costs are reduced. This is a big one, the other purchase services. We've got a transportation contract expiring next year, so that'll come up. We also, this is where we have the cyber charter tuition impact. There are proposals in the legislature. Every year there is. But there is talk of having a flat funding for cyber charters, and it would help school districts a lot if that passes, if and when that passes. Next is supplies. There's been minimal increase. Our administrators have been good with controlling that line item. So that's showing a minimal projection over five years. Property, here's where our tech expenditures dip into capital reserve. So if these were to, these expenditures were to come back to the general fund, if capital reserves depleted, that places additional pressure. So just trying to ensure that that's emphasized. Debt service, trying to keep it at 3%. But when we go out for a bond issue, that's bound to increase. Same with 900s. That's our capital reserve transfers. Any savings, any cash that needs to be moved from the general fund, that's where it hits. And if you see in '28, '29, that's the year, there's a big jump. That's when we'll probably go out for our bond issue. I also want to remind the board, there's a teacher's contract coming up that year. So you see what the expenditures are. It's bound to be affected with economic factors, with staffing, and other programs. Any new programs will change all these projections and estimates. So local revenues, we've kind of plateaued. And Allegheny County's got the reassessments. They've got their own rules with common level ratios. So it's just a modest 1% increase. So if you look, if we keep dipping into the fund balance, you see by year three, which is '28, '29, we want to move, you know, money, but we don't have money in the general fund. So just to be cautious, we cannot keep relying on the general fund for recurring expenditures. We just have to make sure we live within our budget and student enrollment and all that good stuff. So just want to emphasize that. You see how that $10 million wiped out in year three, just with conservative assumptions. You see how that ten millions wiped out in year three, just with conservative assumptions. Nothing out of the ballpark, you know, nothing insane. It's two percent, three percent, minimal cost, cost the same. But that's what happens. That's what happens if we keep dipping into the fund balance. Okay, so last but not least, like to wrap up the budget ensures all our students are provided with the academics, the student support, the activities, the athletics, so that they can reach their full potential. Any questions with the budget?
Dr. Rajapal, I would just like to ask, will we get a digital copy of that PowerPoint? Because that's different from last week's PowerPoint or from our packets?
I can, I can get that, yeah. I just, I would say these are numbers that could change before the next budget, the final budget. So I'll be cautious about, um, yeah. And if you need help disseminating information, please reach out at any time. Um, these numbers can change, like Dr. Grasek mentioned, the state won support A D Y. So now I'm going to go back and see, what did we spend the last three years? Do we need to increase this? Or do you think we'll be good holding the line? So that's where, you know, it keeps, especially this year, especially this year, you want to make sure it's a fine balance and we come out good.
With the, um, the numbers that we have there, uh, again, a lot of these numbers, people have to understand that are, we don't really have a control over, we don't have a control over, um, you know, the debt service and things like that. Of the budget, roughly twenty-six million dollars, um, how much control do we have? How many dollars, do you have an idea of what are flexible? And I know some of those are like, well, supplies, you know, you have control, but you don't because you still have to buy supplies. But, uh, do you know about how much that would be in that category? Do we actually?
I would like to say that I've got full control of the budget. But I do know, um, if there's anything that concerns safety, that concerns student services, we just provide for it, you know?
Yeah.
That comes first, it may not be a line item in the budget, but we make sure the boards, um, inform and we, you know, process that expenditure. So I would say if we control the budget pretty good, it's a tight budget though for the upcoming year. We can just control in terms of revenue now, expenditures, yes. But in terms of revenues, local revenue with property assessments is the only thing the school district controls.
Right.
Earned income taxes is economic factors. Transfer taxes depends on the interest rates. State, they don't pass their budget till June, out of our control. Federal, out of our control. So the only thing with revenues, which is money coming in, is that local property assessment piece.
Right. From the expense side is, um, I, I know that there's a lot of things that we can make happen, but if you had to put a percentage to, um, you know, the salaries are contractual, you know, those, those are the biggest parts of our, our budget. The part that we really have.
So I would say we've got no control over equipment breaking down, repairs, the constant repairs, you think you pick something next week, it's, you know? So that's totally out of our control. Debt service is in our control because, you know, we know exactly what the payments are. Property assessment, appeals and refunds, no control.
Right.
Um, so professional services and placements, if students need specialized services at a particular institution, it's prescribed by law. We've got no, you know, we just go with it. So I would say anything related to safety and student services, we just do it. We reach out to Mr. Hoffman's office, make sure everything's in compliance. And we just have to abide by that.
Yep.
Did that answer?
Um, for the most part, again, it, I'm trying to highlight that there's, we, we control what we can, but a lot of the things that we do here are predetermined. And, uh, it's, it's very difficult. And again, like I said, you know, the minimum money that we get out of the federal government, uh, again, the, uh, I think you did a great job in bringing the hopes that, uh, allowance that, that they'll be doing and minimizing with tax increase. But to clarify that again, although Governor Shapiro increased that, uh, that number, that number comes right out of our, our revenue stream. And basically what we're doing is replacing it. And that's the only reason you're really seeing that small tax increase. Um, it's difficult to say, you know, uh, we just let that hit and do, do nothing with it. I mean, and it, it goes to the mandates of the state that are unfunded. That's an unfunded, you know, that's actually a reduction in our revenue stream, which is, uh, pretty irritating. Um, I wish they would fund by the state, those type of, uh, you know, increased savings that, you know, they get to put a feather in their cap, but it just, you know, hammers our revenue stream. I'll go open it to any other questions, comments, uh, on the motion that's on the table. Go ahead.
I have a couple of things. Um, I was wondering if you could, um, just kind of expand a little bit on how, um, you know, we're, the mandate is that we have to provide for English as a second language and we had to hire a new teacher this year. So how did that, how did that work with the contract with the teachers? And then how is that like affecting the budget for every teacher that we have to do that? Every, every hire? How does that affect the budget roughly, like?
There are instances where outsourcing saves the school district money. You know, we're not paying benefits in most cases. Um, what happens though is that places like the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, they're also looking to increase their revenue. Where do they get their revenue? From us. Uh, so they start to increase their costs. Uh, we looked at the number of ESL students we have, which have increased the past two years to where it was no longer a cost savings to outsource. So then we hired someone on our district dollars to do so. Now, if those numbers continue to increase, I don't know if we'd have to consider hiring another person or not. Um, when students show up here, we educate them. Um, and it doesn't matter what their background is. Um, so it's good that we can provide that. There's a financial piece to that, like everything else, which makes it very difficult to balance. Um, so with those increasing numbers, we did make this recommendation to bring that person on staff and now they are, um, part of our bargaining unit. We're, we're glad that they're here. Um, but tho- those are things that frequently happen with, within school districts. And the same with cost for special ed. Um, students, we have students who need very finite, specific care. The school districts cannot provide in-house. So we have to set, we pay for, um, private placements, approved private schools, so that students can get what they need in order to live and thrive in society. That comes at a big expense to districts. Again, students need it, so we're okay, we feel great doing it. But I don't think people always realize the cost that's associated. And that's what makes these conversations challenging is that we're here for kids and we're talking about money and it's like, we're not saying each kid is worth X amount of dollars, but there's a dollar figure behind every little move we make that affects children.
So, but an unfunded mandate like that is going to cost the school close to a million dollars?
Absolutely.
Is that a yearly amount that you figure for a teacher with benefits and everything included? Or is that over?
I think it's over the course of someone's career.
Yeah, okay.
And I think that number is an old number.
It's an old number.
And from, because if you just take a look at the sellers and the teacher, the teacher being there twenty to thirty years, um, I don't think a million would cover it anymore. Um, we used to say that it's a million-dollar, uh, decision over the lifespan of that. But, uh, I, I think if we actually run the, uh, the numbers, we might be a little bit higher. So, uh, but again, it's, it's the idea that, uh, you know, those little moves that we're mandated to do, they're going to cost the district. That's nothing, not a lot we can do other than, you know?
Right, right. Well, and just to keep it in, in perspective, like thinking into the future, I had sent the board all a copy of an article a few months ago from the City of Pittsburgh Public Schools. And it had, um, the City of Pittsburgh Public Schools had eighteen hundred English language learners this year. Uh, it said nearly forty percent of students at South Hills are English language learners. This year, the school admitted about forty new students with numbers still increasing. Alder Dyce has recently swelled with, um, English learners, enrolling fifty more this year for a total of a hundred and forty-four dollars, for a hundred and forty-four students. So it's just to be aware that there is this increase and we could double that number in the next year and then have to hire. So that's a big, that's a big budget item to just, you know, keep in mind and why that's happening. But, um, the other thing on it was the part of the, um, technology end. And there was, um, last week, we had talked about, um, an email that had come through that was never sent to the rest of the board. Um, it was concerning the OptiSigns and it wasn't included and Swank Media Streaming Services. That Swank Media, what is that used for? Because I thought, I didn't know if it was something that we had used in the past, but it's something new that we're doing for next year, right? But it was never, I don't remember ever hearing anything about it, so.
It, that was to eliminate the issue that was brought up about.
It was about streaming services, but the cost of using that is, is, uh, over twenty-two hundred dollars. So my questioning it is that it was brought to our attention last week. And, and the OptiSigns, now that is for the digital signage in the school. The, the signs that they bought, the, the digital signage, that was nineteen thousand dollars last year purchased, right? So what I'm saying is that.
Nineteen hundred, nineteen hundred.
It was nineteen hundred? I don't think, that was nineteen thousand.
The annual license for OptiSigns.
No, no, the actual.
Oh, the actual.
So, point being that I would like to see some of these technology, um, items removed from the budget. Uh, and I would approve this tonight, but I would really like to see some of these things removed from these budget items. Um, and I just want to comment that the digital signage purchase of nineteen thousand dollars, when that happened, it was not really clearly explained to me anyway. I don't know if I'm, if I'm missing the vote, but I know there's a couple of us that kind of feel the same way, that we should have a representation, a description of what this purchase is. Because now, like that nineteen thousand last year, now we find out there's a two thousand dollar lease. Now we want, um, the other one, the, the you kind, the kindness, um,
The software that.
Software that they want to use, you know, it's not that expensive, but these additional things snowball and we've got to, we've got, it's just like you said, everything adds up. Everything adds up. Where are we going to draw the line on this? If I had known what those digital signs were for, I thought they were talking about the digital signage on Freefoot Road. That's what I thought, but, you know, I didn't know at that point. But it was never brought and explained to the board, this is what this is. We should have voted it out before. I mean, I'd love to see it taken down and returned and get our money back, is what I'd like to see. I don't know if it's possible, but that's a lot of money. So I say, uh, you know, I'd like to see those things removed from the budget and then, um, definitely not that contract for that, uh, you kind contract that they're talking about. And that in the future, we have a little bit more, um, you know, reporting and explaining, you know, this is what it is, this is what it's for, et cetera, et cetera. So we can make an informed decision on it. And now it's too late, so it's in there. I don't know what else you're going to use those for.
Understood. And I'd like.
Um, Mrs.?
I'd just say quickly, um, the recommendation of the majority of the tech committee anyway, um, to not make any cuts to the current technology budget.
And then just further explanation on what those couple of things were, the, um, oh, sorry, I had my email pulled up and I didn't. The streaming, uh, the Swank Media, that is to avoid, so like if a teacher wants to show a Netflix documentary or, um, for example, one of the things in like the ESL classroom, they do a lot of like the song and dance learning or numbers and stuff. It's so that rather than teachers using their individual Netflix login or Hulu login or any of those, for those educational things, that they're all using a school login through this account rather than their individual one. So it's, it's a school safety thing, so we're not, you know, someone isn't pulling up their, their Netflix what they just watched last night in their classroom and we're not, you know, watching an episode of Ozark or something, so, um.
I mean, to clarify that, every item that's out there on the internet and organizations have their own T's and C's. By using this organization, they're doing, they, the background, we agree to their T's and C's, if I'm not mistaken on that, uh, as a way to describe it.
Understanding the purpose of that software.
To eliminate us.
Is to navigate on your behalf, the terms and conditions of these independent sites as to your use in the classroom of those materials.
Yeah, and I understand that your concerns were a little bit different than that.
No, because I was, it was explained to me that that was used so that in the multimedia classroom, that they could, uh, splice videos and, and edit things and that type of thing.
That also was included in that.
Okay.
So it's, it's more broader than just the display items that you're referring to and the kind of thing, I think that's, uh, some of the more prudent across the board in that technology space, so.
Okay. Well, that was, you know, like again, this was put on, this was an email that wasn't even sent to us. It was signed out like the, at the last meeting and so, you know.
Got, have questions. Mr. Paul?
You know, I'd like to, uh, thank Dr. Rajapal, Dr. Grasek for putting together an outstanding, outstanding budget. You know, sometimes, you know, these people wonder what the mission of a school board member is. We look at what they've put in front of us. And then we make a decision about a budget we can pass. You know, I look at eight out of the last twelve years, eight. No tax increase. Now who in our valley can say that? Eight. But sometimes we drown arguing about simple things. You know, last time we're looking, we're looking at twenty-six million. I look at what we're providing to prepare our students. as exceptional. And guys, as I get ready to leave this board, don't drown in small things. You know, I was listening today, you know, we always, and our kids believe this today, you can get there from here. They're running out of job markets prepared because of the budget we are doing now and in the future and in the past. Again, Dr. Rajapal, Dr. Grasik, outstanding job. You know what we didn't bring out? And we've eliminated a lot of things through attrition. That's over a million bucks a year in salary and benefits that we're not paying because of the diligence of our administration. Again, thank you. Again, biggest thing we do as a school board tonight, the budget.
Thank you. And one other item, I, I know a lot of people have heard over and over about our fund balance, but the fund balance is one of those things that is allowing us to do the capital expenditures without going to a bond. And in the past, all the things we did are, were under the bond issues. And when you look at that and the interest you're paying on top of that and the timeline, they usually tack the biggest part onto the back end of the existing bond issue. So you're just sitting, waiting and earning, paying interest on that till you can get it. Was one of the decisions that was made seven, seven years ago to start building a fund balance prudently without just hitting the taxpayers with increases to Mr. Pollak's point about very few tax increases over the last 10 or 12 years that he's referring to. But again, I think that's one of the luxuries that we've had is that we've been very prudent in how we handle and build the, the fund balance. Because we know we're going to have those expenses, we know we're going to have those issues and we're planning for it, that's why we put the five-year projections out there. So we're at a point, it's difficult, but we're at a point where we're going to use up quite a bit of the fund balance, which is what it was there for. So that we didn't have to do a bond issue, especially during a time when interest rates are extremely volatile and high. So that's to our benefit. And again, kudos to our administration and, and management over the last, you know, years in being prudent, putting that together. So I applaud them on that as well. Any other questions, comments that anybody would have? Seeing none, now we're going to take our vote. I believe this is a roll call vote at this point.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mrs. Ecker.
Yes.
Ms. Haas.
Yes.
Mrs. Moretti.
No.
Mrs. Polovich.
Yes.
Mr. Pollak.
Yes.
Mrs. Rinaldi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarno.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
ATS and Wernau.
And we appreciate the board doing their due diligence. If, and again, this is a budget, these are things that you can still work on over time. It's not something that's set in stone that you have to spend this money. But we have to put a budget together, not knowing a lot of things like revenues that are coming in or, or whatever the state's going to be doing. So it is a budget, but it's our responsibility to watch those expenditures as we go along. Those that don't like the budget that we have, be the first ones to come up with areas of, you know, where we need to change. We all sat through these meetings earlier and I believe that this is our best option at this time. So thank you. And enter your vote, I guess, on the system, or is that automatic? Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you. At this point, Mr. Pollak, we'll move on to 7:30.
Yes, I'd like to recommend the board appoint Ms. Paula Jean Moretti as Board Treasurer effective July 1st, 2025.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Zachary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Item 7 dot 4, Mr. Pollak.
Recommend the board, recommend the board approve the 25, 26 Operation Administrative Budgets for the Forbes Road Carrier and Technology Center in the amounts of operating budget, 8,176,804. Administrative budget, 424,822. Our projected allocated value, school district's share, 29,042. Budget represents an increase of 5.03% for the prior year.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Second.
Thank you. Question on the motion?
I just want to point out that the, that our district's share is only the administrative part of that budget of the 424,822, not the 8,176,804.
Thank you. Any other question on the motion?
Oh, by the way, guys, tomorrow, Gateway High School Certificate Program for all the Forbes students starts at 7:00.
Thank you. Roll call bill?
Mrs. Ecker.
Yes.
Ms. Haas.
Yes.
Mrs. Moretti.
Yes.
Mrs. Polovich.
Yes.
Mr. Pollak.
Yes.
Mrs. Rinaldi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarno.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Polino.
Yes.
Nine yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Pollak?
No.
Ms. Zachary, education.
Um, yeah, I just have a few, few quick things. As Mr. Polino just mentioned, the Forbes Road Carrier Technical Center Senior Certificate Ceremony will take place tomorrow at Gateway High School at 7 o'clock. The Honors Bank will be held Thurs, this Thursday, May 15th, at the Springdale Veterans Association. This event celebrates students who have achieved over a 94% in each of the first three nine-week graduating periods. And an update from last week, the final count of food items collected by the Future is Mine Club is Springdale High School at 1,744 and Riverview High School with 850 declaring the Springdale. So this excellent portrayal of character requires a special thank you to all the students and faculty involved in supporting our local food banks. Congratulations on a job well done. And a quick congratulations to the 2025 May Day Queen and King Lily Pazul and Caleb McIntyre. That's it for the report, then. Recommend for 8.2, recommend the board approve the list of graduating seniors last of 2025 and further approve those who meet the requirements for graduation to be granted an official diploma on May 30th, 2025 or shortly thereafter.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Sarno. Any question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
I have a question, what time did you say the Honors Bank would start? Thursday?
Six.
Six.
Six hit the bets.
I'm not getting a thing for the votes.
Mrs. Stone, did we hit a voting item on Forbes or no?
Yeah, I hit the last one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and then moving on to 8.3, recommend the board approve the 2025, 2026 School Parent Compact for Acrotonia Elementary School.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Sarno. Any question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion passed. Enter your votes. Moving along to technology, any report, Mrs. Polovich?
There was no additional information shared or required.
Okay, Mrs. Haas, personnel.
Can I just add one thing under technology, Mr.?
Sure.
Dr. Grasik really, you know, put in a lot of effort to meet with all of the, the teachers in regard to their use of technology. And this is also, you know, you know, some questions we've had about the use of technology. And it's a very detailed report and I encourage you all to read it. He had it attached to one of his Friday updates and it really gives a good picture of how the teachers are using it in the classroom. Remarkable is how much they don't use it in the classroom. So it's, it's very interesting to see, you know, for the, the costs spent for technology and the use in the classroom. I think there are some questions that need answered. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to comment also on that. And it's actually attached to this under the administrative content so that everybody can see that. But you didn't include the pre-K in here, right? So, but pre-K has the tablets, but they're not included in any questioning on this, your report here, right?
They are.
Okay. So, yeah, I agree. I, I think it's a pretty minimal amount of time that they, they seem to use it. And I'm glad that this is a good start to a conversation. I'm hoping this is not the end of this conversation. But recommending that the current model would be kept. I'm going to push back a little bit on it and hope that we can, you know, look a little more. I think they don't use it that often, you know, without really getting into any of the programs or whatever, cutting anything. I think we can still dig a little deeper and really cut back on some of this technology budget and, and see if we can get the library going, get maybe a computer lab in there just for these younger kids and really dig into this a little bit deeper. I'm hoping that we can continue to work on that.
I just reaffirm, I sent an email, a forwarded message, what Mrs. Polovich said, that the majority of, two-thirds of the committee agrees with your recommending, recommendation of maintaining the current model for the coming year.
What stood out to me when I, when I talked to the, the teachers was that many of them had similar concerns about social media. Because of the age of the students, they're not seeing that on the laptops. And they know that because of Gil Guardian, which is something that we have district-wide. So I was, their awareness is similar, I would say, to most of us sitting here, that they have concerns about it, but they didn't have that concern in the, in the classroom specifically. I thought the balance was, was adequate. You know, there, there's a lot of tactile learning that we want to take place in those younger grades. And they're, and what they stressed was, they didn't want our, their students, our students, to get behind. That's why I felt the balance was a good balance. However, Ms. Zachary and other people, other board members have brought up some things that I do question and I'm, I'm learning about. I do worry about our students' information. The thought that people can access that is, is troubling. And I, I don't think it happens through here, but who knows what other people are capable of doing? So I do have concerns about that. How do you protect kids' identity and their personal information? I wish I had the answer for that. That is concerning. And if it would get to a point where we're relying on computers to teach, I would say we have a problem at, at that point in time. And I, I didn't get that from these teachers. And we can make reductions in pre-K, which is why I did not include that. But those purchases were already made, so.
I understand, yeah.
I'm grateful this was moved out of the budget conversation because they were already purchased. Pre-K, there's a limited amount that, that we can reduce what they're doing in pre-K.
I just want to say, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mrs..
I was just going to mention too, the, the social media issue with technology, of course, is not going to be at those lower grades. It's up in fifth, sixth, seventh, where they increase the use and, you know, that it, it really starts to affect them a little bit more. I forget what else I was going to say, go ahead.
Yeah, which again, they're not on social media, the laptops. But just again, pointing out that since Mr. Main's introduction to AVSD, he has cut our overall technology budget by 30% in both streamlining of staffing and modernizing of our technology. So even though technology has really increased in, in its usage, our overall budget, I don't, I, I don't know. Maybe Dr. Rajapal, is there any other department that's decreased their spending by 30%? I'm going to go out on a limb and say probably not. So that's pretty impressive. So again, just affirming, most of the technology committee is supportive of it as it currently is.
Yeah, I think one of the areas Dr. Grasik mentioned though is this data collection thing. And, you know, coming from that industry, prior, in a prior life here, when you have these companies, that are large companies pushing their products and there's a reason behind it. And marketing is in there and it's, it's embedded in that, that collection. And we talk about it as something good. I mean, when you hear them talking about, hey, this is going to improve, you know, our, our world and our life. But at the same time, you've got to be cautious of the negatives of what that can do. That data collection piece of it, it's about privacy and being able to, you know, contain that. It's amazing what the marketing can do and how that can influence you on what you do because of the data they have and how specific they can market to you based on this data they're collecting on everybody. And it's millions and millions of pieces of data that are collected. And again, I think that's something that needs to be, you know, looked at as we move along. There's a lot of great things with it and there's those things that, you know, those companies want that data because it allows them to market more efficiently. And the thing is, it invades your privacy, it really does. So it's a, it's a balancing act that we have to, to deal with there. So everything, it, it's just things to be aware of as we move along.
So I, I remember what I was going to ask. Now, I don't know, like, because in the younger grades, they said some of the programs, they use gaming to keep. So the gaming is where, what I'm understanding is where it gets more addictive. And as they, the more they're going to use gaming technology, like e-gaming is coming into education curriculum and, you know, ed tech world and all that, that's where, like, could we, could we look at technology and try and really be careful with that e-gaming, you know, approach, opposed to something that's a little more, I, I don't even know if, if it's possible to like give them an educational, something that's not considered e-gaming. But it is that, it's that addictive e-gaming thing that where it pulls them in and wants them to have more and more of it. So that's the concern. And then the other thing is like looking at like the Verizon innovation thing, you know? Nobody's going to argue that was a great experience for the kids, whatever. But did they have to give their information and give anything to, to log on? Like they all had those virtual, it was augmented reality that they were able to look at. When Verizon brought those in here, like, are they permanent in our school? When Verizon brought those in here, like, are they permanent in our school? Those computers that they were using? Or did Verizon bring those in that day? And did each child have to create an account to use it? Because that's the thing, is having, like, even some of the career things. We have to create, create an account for that student. How many different accounts are being opened in a student's name where data is collected? So that maybe is something we can kind of watch or some, you know? I mean, it's a lot of, it's a lot of information, you know? I mean.
Questions need to be asked as we move on.
Yeah, I mean, Google's in a major lawsuit for censorship. So, like, this is real stuff, you know? So information coming in can be censored, too, you know? You don't know. And that's a whole, the whole thing with the curriculum in it is that, what are we seeing? What are we okaying before it's in here? We didn't even know that Verizon Innovation thing came in here until it was done in the paper. Like, that's, so that's a, that's our next conversation for resource materials. But that's a big, it's a big topic, I think, and we need to just be on it.
Thank you. Mrs. Haas, personnel?
Thank you. 10.2, recommend the board approve the following leave of absence. 40-80, it's family medical leave till August 1st, not to exceed 60 days. Employee 133, family medical leave April 3rd to April the 16th.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, I'm sorry, Mrs. Moretti. Any question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion passed.
Oh, I was going to say mine's working.
Okay. 10.3, recommend the board approve the second reading of the following job description.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Taken by Mrs. Moretti. Any question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection. Moving on.
Okay, 10.4, employment of professional staff. Recommend the board approve the employment of the following professional staff. Michael Conley, speech and language teacher.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Taken by Mrs. Rinaldi. Any question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
10 points, is that five? Five. Recommend the board approve the employment of the following athletic staff as listed below.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Did we skip one there? No?
Do we do the supplemental stuff?
That's what I thought.
Yeah, because that was 10.6. You still need to do 10.5.
10.5 still needs to be, that's what I thought.
That was my fault.
It was her fault, Mrs. Moretti. She pushed the wrong thing. Where we're at.
10.5.
10.5.
10.5. Recommend the board approve the employment of the following supplemental staff. Morgan Blanchflower, drill team instructor.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Taken by Mrs. Eckert. Any question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion passed. Move down to 10.7.
10.7, retirement. Recommend the board accept with regret the retirement of the following staff. Christopher Olman, science teacher.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any question on the motion?
I'd just like to add that Mr. Olman was a joy to work with as a teacher, and he brought a lot of new ideas and really grew the biology program in our district. And, you know, I know our, our students have, have become better science-oriented thanks to Mr. Olman.
Thank you. Any other question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
That's all I have, Mr. Polino.
Thank you very much. Did that come up for anybody? Moving on to emergency management, Mrs. Sarno.
Just a quick note that our May meeting will be moved to early June due to schedule conflicts and waiting for information, mainly on the doors.
So Thursday's not, next Thursday?
This Tuesday's not happening, no. It's going to be either June 2nd or 3rd, but I don't think we finalized the date. So I'll get that to you as soon as possible, as soon as I know. You can get on your trip or get back or whatever.
All right, moving on to athletics, Mrs. Rinaldi.
No report.
No report. Policy and legislation affairs, Mrs. Moretti.
Thank you, Mr. Polino. Under report, I did give a very thorough report last week, you know, at the agenda planning meeting. Item 13.2, recommend the board approve the second reading of the policy listed below. It's policy 709.1, school police officers.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Taken by Mrs. Eckert. Any question on a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
Item 13.3, recommend the board approve the first reading of the policies listed below. Policy 106, guides for planned instruction. Policy 107, adoption of planned instruction. Policy 618, student activity funds.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Taken by Mrs. Eckert. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
And that concludes policy legislative affairs. Thank you, Mr. Polino.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the floor to board members for any discussion items.
The lot we have next to, remember we bought that lot next to the high school? Was there any plans to use it after parking?
I don't know, we have specific plans, but I think it's one of the options that we had discussed. Several options. This is the, originally, we were going to have, trying to put tennis courts there.
Below the field house.
Yeah, right below the field house.
We had talked about potentially putting gravel there. If once Colfax is leveled, we can put gravel there. We also have the back of the building, so there's several options we're looking at. And we believe that the repaving of the student lot, the way that they're going to set up the lines will actually create some more parking. So yes, to answer your question, we've considered it. That was a long way to say that.
I did want to add, under emergency management.
Well, you can't do that, no.
In today's PSBA release of the Education Week, there is a National News in Education Week, and it's what makes schools safe. And under this, like, everything that they outline, we are currently doing and planning on doing. So I just want to give, you know, kudos to the EM Committee and the administration, you know, for, you know, promoting all this safety for our students because it is more than just physical safety, you know? It's all encompassing, and we are hitting all those targets. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. What, a few months ago, we discussed, talking about Colfax, what happened to the flagpole at Colfax? Somebody asked me that. Somebody came, before we started tearing down, they were interested in the flagpole. Well, I was told the flagpole was taken down and they crushed everything. Is that true?
It would have been the, it would have been the contractor's property at that point. Once things were turned over to them, everything there was there.
I thought we were going to keep that there.
Look, cement Colfax sign.
Yeah, that, where's that at now? Where's it at? But somebody wanted to buy the flagpole or something before, and we were going to keep it there. I just wondered.
I recall something along those lines, and by that point, the contractor had already taken over the property. I believe we redirected wherever that question was to the contractor. It was.
Kind of like the Brits, that everybody wanted.
Yeah, where'd they go?
Those are, everything there was his responsibility. We had no control over that. Any other items? Discussion items? We'll open the floor to any audience questions, comments. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved as second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Have a great day. Good evening, everyone. Have a good night.
Thousand pound sisters, I can still.